I'd like to call the meeting to order in the East Burnie Wyandotte Township Board of Supervisors AM meeting this Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. I want to remind everybody a recording device will be in use during the meeting. Let's open the meeting with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every human justice for all.
I want to remind everybody about our rules for conduct of public meetings, established by Resolution 2001-LA. The time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none. We have the minutes of the previous meetings. So more than one minute in here. I'll make a motion to approve the March 20, 2025 Board Supervisors meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We also have in our packet the treasuries report and we need to make an authorization to pay bills and approve the payroll. I'll make a motion to pay the bills and approve the payroll. I have reviewed the check this morning.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All business. The National Lands Trust proposal, recording a conservation easement on 141 Crawford Road. Mr. Revan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At this board's meeting on March 20th, the township manager was given authorization to execute a proposal from the Natural Lands Trust, subject to two conditions. The first condition is that the conservation fee does not exceed $10,000 and that the conservation easement must be completed and recorded before June 1st, 2025. The Natural Lands Trust proposal would engage them to write and later enforce provisions of a conservation easement on the newly acquired open space parcel located at 131 Crawford Road. At the same meeting, the board gave the township manager permission to execute a contract with an auctioneer to sell the property no later than June 11th, 2025. This morning, I regret to report that I have not executed the Natural Lands Trust proposal as neither of the three conditions described by this board can be satisfied. As a related matter, I have also not executed the auctioneer's proposal. I'd like to outline, describe what has happened since your last meeting and to propose a course of action.
Please do. Thank you.
On the, on the subject of the timeline, the Natural Lands Trust is unable to record the easement prior to July 1st, not June 1st, due to the timing of the Natural Lands Trust board meeting. If we engage the Natural Lands Trust to do so, they can begin writing a easement immediately, however, they cannot record it prior to July 1st. On the subject of the stewardship fund, the Natural Lands Trust does acknowledge that the rate they're charging as a contribution for the perpetual enforcement of a conservation easement is higher. They asked for 20,000. When asked, they explained that the higher rate was due to a recent experience of enforcing easements and which have had substantial legal bills. They declined to accept a lesser contribution for becoming the enforcement agency, but they did counter that the township could become responsible for enforcing the terms of an easement on its own, at which time no contribution to the stewardship fund would be necessary. So, in light of the township's primary conservation goals, which are the protection of the parcel from further subdivision and to prohibit development out of a building box on the site, I think that the conservation easement would be a fairly simple matter for township staff to administer. Both of those processes, either through the building permit or through land development processes, already flow through the township's office. So I therefore recommend that the township decline the NLT's enforcement service of the easement, but do engage them to write the conservation easement. I also suggest that we set the auction for early July, but not have the auction prior to the recording of an easement in mid-June. It's my proposed course of action in light of the board's direction.
All right. You want to take them one at a time? First one?
Okay, about timeline?
Yeah.
Okay.
The timeline, the revised timeline accessible or acceptable to the supervisor since their board meeting inflicts with us being able to do it at the earlier date. As you recall, the reason we were doing it as an earlier date is we thought we'd have a larger pool of attendees at this point.
I think if you're going to wait till July, you might as well wait till September, October, because I feel like your market's back after that. You lose a lot of people for the summer.
Right. That lies the key, vacation. With that said, though, if you want the house, you're going to come up that day for that auction. I thought about the same thing, but you know, you're going to, you're going to.
Unless you set a higher bid in July with anticipation of a lesser amount of people and then you have to revisit it again in September, October.
There's Luke's recommendation that we don't auction it off prior to the recording of that easement.
It would be difficult to auction something you wouldn't want to put a bid on when you don't know what the final easement's going to say.
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts are that you do the auction, have the outlined easement, you know, available.
But they can change it.
But don't do settlement until after.
They can change it. So then your only course of action is to let the people get out of it if they don't like the easement and that's not, that's not a good thing to do because they can use that as an excuse.
So my recommendation is have an auction on either Wednesday, July 9th, or Wednesday, July 16th. And before any bids are received, the easement would be recorded sometime after July 1st, but before July 9th, we would record the easement. So that no one who shows up to bid on the property would be unaware of the conditions of the conservation easement.
And the alternative is to push it into September?
Well, we have a reserve on it, so if it doesn't, we have to approve it. So if it's not, if it doesn't meet our satisfaction, then we'll do it again.
Okay. Does that satisfy you? All right. We will, do we need a motion for that?
Let's, if you don't mind, my suggestion would be let's resolve both matters and then put that in the form of a single motion.
All right. The second one was the $20,000 contribution they wanted us to make to their capital account. We discussed that. I thought that was an outrageous proposal. I've done these before, especially on a simple parcel like this. And their counter of letting us enforce the easement was a great counter because as Luke explained, they can't build without coming to us for.
We have controls. We have controls.
Right.
If the conservation easement contains some restrictions on timbering on the site, it will be harder to, that would actually require either satellite review or a site visit to ensure that they are not harvesting timber inconsistent. But, but the primary goals were to prevent future land development.
But if they harvest timber, don't they need a permit? From us?
There's probably a line that would be too much timbering for the easement, but not enough timbering for a permit.
Well, having experienced with these, I've watched what they do. They drive up to the woodlot and go like this and say, okay.
Well, that will be our job.
Right.
And in.
For $20,000, I'll do it.
Right. But in defense of their request, it isn't to do it one time costs $20,000. It's to do it till the end of time they have to do that. It's a perpetual obligation and they need a.
Look, I'm very familiar with it. They don't do it every year, trust me, on these ones.
Well, I mean, we're a township. We're the governing body, so we can have control of what happens.
Well, look, we save $20,000.
Obviously, if somebody goes by and sees something.
So you're okay with us enforcing it? Are you okay with us enforcing it?
We're going to do it anyway. All the neighbors are going to do it. Somebody does anything and somebody drives by, they're going to.
And generally, they allow you to cut a tree for fire or.
Yeah.
And remove dead falls and that.
If there's any activity that's egregious, it's going to come out immediately.
What's the third one?
Those are the two things. When do we sell the property? Are we okay with a delay in recording an easement? And is a change to the proposal to make us the enforcing party of the easement acceptable to the board?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we schedule the auction for either, what was the dates in July?
Wednesday, July 9th or Wednesday, July 16th. We could just say before July 16th, as it says in my memo.
And that we will take over the responsibility of enforcing the easement. 141 Creek Road.
I'll second.
Crawford. Crawford. Crawford Road, yes. Thank you. Any further?
Yeah, 241. Yeah, 131, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we approved the moving forward with the auction near, correct? But we didn't engage him officially because we were waiting to hash this out.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I was given permission to execute the auctioneer's contract as well. However, the dates we discussed no longer feasible because we wouldn't have had an easement in place.
Very good. So we can move ahead with that then.
Correct. Thank you.
Next item of all business is the approval to sign the FEMA grant for the Bonneville Mill Bridge.
Thank you. The Bonneville Mill South Bridge project has been approved by FEMA. This project includes restoring the erosion near the south wing wall and underpinning the bridge footings. FEMA has provided a grant for $433,769.90 for the project. $398,392.91 is from FEMA, which is 90% of the grant. And then the remaining $43,376.99 is from FEMA. I requested that Cedarville review the scope of work that FEMA has provided and they have agreed that Kyle Turner of Cedarville has provided a letter stating that the project should be able to be completed for the stated award. And I respectfully request permission to sign the FEMA grant for funding for the Bonneville Mill South Bridge project, the amount of $433,769.90.
Is that a, is the grant enough to do the job completely or is there also, or do you have to wait until it's designed to know that?
According to Kyle Turner from Cedarville, that that funding is adequate for the project.
If I may, this is one of two projects for which FEMA and PMA grant funding was made available. They're both bridges. The other instance is an Old Whorshoe Pike culvert. In that instance, we awarded FEMA and PMA grants and we engaged Cedarville to do the replacement under a state contract, a CoStarz contract. Matt, do you see the same state contract being used for the Bonneville location?
Yes.
So this is, so what's on your agenda is do we accept the FEMA money? What will be next is do we engage Cedarville as part of a CoStarz contract to do the project?
Do we anticipate the township having to contribute to this?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
And the contract for Old Whorshoe Pike is above what FEMA has contributed. We can go back to FEMA for additional funding to make a difference.
Back to PMA?
Yes. The cost will be more than FEMA has awarded, but PMA said ask again.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, the only question, one of the questions that I have, and I've seen, you know, these come in front of us, and I guess why are we not getting other bids? I mean, for projects of this size, you're close to a million dollars on these two projects and we're not getting none of the other bids. That, you know, that.
Other design bids.
Yeah, other, yeah. We're able to.
I mean, I know we're able to.
Yeah, not have to bid this project through.
But why are we not?
There would be additional cost to prepare bid specifications and the.
Other bidders would provide their own.
No, we have.
Right? We'd have to prepare that?
Yeah.
So is Cedarville going to be preparing that?
They're going to prepare a proposal for the repairs to the bridge.
And other contractors wouldn't be able to prepare a proposal to repair the bridge?
I believe Cedarville is the only company that is under the CoStarz contract.
One company?
I believe so.
So the exception to the bid threshold for projects is existing state contracts. Cedarville has an existing state contract to do design-build projects and we could use that state contract to do that. You are correct, or as we're saying, there are no other engineering firms that have a design-build-state contract. As to why it can be preferable to use a design-build instead of bidding it out, one is we know how much we're being awarded from the federal government and we can, at this point, because of the design-build contact, confidently say that this project will not exceed the grant funding available. I could not say that if we engaged an engineering firm to bid it out. It could come in high. It could come in, we might wind up rejecting all the bids because the bids exceed the grant funding available. I can't, the, the, let me, I'll put it as succinctly as I can. The value add in using a CoStarz method of getting a price for replacement is certainty.
Well, there's efficiencies because your, the design-build, build process is cheaper than a design and a bid process.
And I'm listening to the response and I just wanted to get on the record because if the question comes up, why have you not bid this out? It's a million dollars worth of work here. We want the public to understand the process and the procedure and why we're doing what we're doing.
Right. And I agree.
Because, I mean, obviously, on its face.
We have no control.
On its face, when you just say, okay, we're just going to give it to so-and-so, that raises eyebrows, right?
Right. Well, we're not quite doing that because we're following the CoStarz rules.
Okay. Well, a lot of people don't understand that. So it's good to have this conversation.
I don't think the CoStarz understands that.
All right.
And it does seem odd that you don't design it and then put the bid out, but to make the papers, and I learned this in the school board, school board, because I always had the same question as you did. Why does it cost so much to design? And it's because you have to make sure all the specifications are exact.
Correct. And by way of a recent example, pardon the interruption, Mr. Chairman. When we, when we got grant funding to build a bathroom in phase one of the community park, the first step we did was put together bid specs for site work. And then we had Cedar, no, we had Panone to do the design specs and then we bid it out. And the cost for the site work exceeded the entire budget for the bathrooms. And we wound up rejecting all the bids. And then we bought a prefabricated building off of CoStarz. So the entire first step of first putting together a bid spec and then offering it for bids wound up costing more than the solution we went with.
That's good information and why we're having the conversation, that our residents and the public understands the process and because on its face.
The bidding process in Pennsylvania is archaic and could use a complete resamping.
Okay. Any comments on that with regards to this?
Kyle?
I have no comments. Yeah, we've been down this for a while, so.
Right. Here's the. Okay. So you're looking for a motion to approve the signing of the FEMA grant contract?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the input and it's important we all understand, stand it. Moving on to new business, proposal from Cedarville Engineering, Culver's Run Stream Restoration Survey, Design and Grant Management.
Yeah, this is me again. Thank you.
Mr. Revan. I'm sorry.
So I want to, we have a representative of Cedarville in to answer any questions you might have, but if you'll pardon my just brief introduction to the issue. In the last cycle of our MS4 permit, we were required to develop and implement a pollution reduction plan. The pollution reduction plan that the board supervisors adopted had two major projects. One was the retrofit of the stormwater system in the Culbertson Run neighborhood. The other was a stream restoration in the Hideaway Farms development. One of the two of those has been implemented. The permit that had the pollution reduction plan obligation has since expired and thanks to the work of Cedarville, we've received another MS4 permit. That MS4 permit says that there are no new obligations for the pollution reduction, but we do need to complete the pollution reduction plan from any prior cycle. What's in your packet is a proposal from Cedarville. Cedarville wrote and successfully obtained a Growing Greener grant in the amount of $45,000. That is not close to the total implementation cost of the stream restoration. However, it does move the football forward. The proposal is how that money and then some additional township investment would be spent. So is that a fair introduction?
Very accurate, yes. Good morning. Happy to answer any questions on that. I think it's a very actually good thing. Hopefully, I'm loud enough. It may have seemed perhaps because you only received the $45,000 of the total request. So that was, you know, unfortunate in a way. However, this project would keep you in compliance and by doing this, you'd be able to get to 30% design and that would make you even more competitive for the next grant rounds because you'd be able to kind of really have some meat on the bone to show DEP and to other grant sources what the project's going to really look like. You'll have some of the data, you'll have maps, you'll have survey, you'll have a lot of meat on the bone and they really look for that when they're going for grant funding. They try to fund DEP and other grantees, try to fund projects that they think are going to be successful. So this was actually, I think, a step in a really good direction, keeps you in compliance for DEP and moves the ball forward, like Luke said. You don't have to invest too much funding right now. CEG will take care of the Growing Greener grant for you, which is quite a headache. So we'll take care of all that administrative work and I think it would be a good step for you, keep you in compliance and then we'll apply for a grant next round and just chip in a way at it until we are able to get the project totally built.
The $40,000 that we received in the grant, that goes against what cost?
$450,000 and that was four years ago's cost estimate. So it's 10%.
So we tell DEP we have a hardship and that they'll have to deal with it on their own.
I'm so against this. It's such a little, I mean.
I mean, unfunded mandates, let them deal with it.
But what you said, Bobby, may I call you Bobby?
Yeah, please.
Bobby, what you said, though, was a little different than I understood it. So you're saying you're going to use the $45,000 to look at the plan, make it as efficient as possible, write the specs for it so that then we can go out and apply for grants to actually do the work.
Correct. Continue to apply for grants.
So where's the shortfall in the $40,000? I mean, what do we, what's this number here, 51763? This is a proposal from Cedarville.
Yes.
So we'd have to invest a lot in this.
That's for the investment for the Growing Greener.
That would be our out-of-pocket to write this grant. What's the $40,000?
Okay.
So what's that go towards?
Okay. The Growing Greener grant is for $45,000. It was not what we wrote the grant amount for and it is not the only award that we anticipate getting. The proposal before you today would spend that $45,000 and you'll see the number, the bottom line number, I think it's 51?
Yeah, 51763.
Right. So we have a proposal for $51,000 worth of work being defrayed by a $45,000 grant. When that deliverable is complete, we have a hard stop and try for more grants.
Right. That's, so you're investing and if we don't get the grants, we can kick the ball out.
We could demonstrate, we would continue to apply.
So we're demonstrating that we are actively pursuing this and if we don't get the money, then there's not much we can do at that point and, you know, DEP will, you know, figure it out on our own.
Right. And I know.
Buys us time. Okay. Well, I'm just trying to, which I didn't understand. I didn't think it bought us time, but it bought us time.
So I mean, I didn't see the $450,000 or whatever it was that you said, but I wasn't involved at that time, maybe with regards to.
It was actually before my time. The first thing I did was I wrote a grant, I helped out and wrote a grant in March, four years ago, March of 2022, actually, and the grant was not funded.
Yeah.
So.
And my guess going forward, a lot of these grants that may come from the federal side are not going to come from anywhere.
Well, that's the only place you're really going to get the grant.
Well, it might as well forget it.
Well, this is state funded, so Growing Greener.
And this is state?
Yeah.
And they get their money from the federal, which they won't be.
Some of the money from the Fed. Growing Greener is a good little funding program.
Well, the grant was being administered and decided upon by the county commissioners.
Yeah, that's, that's in an ideal situation where money's flowing from the top down, which it isn't right now.
And I would say we're not the only township that probably is saying.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's got it, so. We may be just spinning our wheels in an effort to stave off any comments from DEP.
Well, the thing that bothers me the most is they came up with this fact that, and it's only 450 feet of the stream. It's not the whole stream. We have thousands of feet yet to, yet to deal with. They came up with this 450 feet while they were constructing the Hideaway development and you always have runoff and silt accumulation. This is to reduce the silt accumulation.
Doesn't it go back on the development?
Which they estimate, which they estimate over, what was it, a four-year period to be one and a half tons or one and a half cubic yards? It wasn't. It wasn't like you could send a backhoe down there and get rid of it in a half an hour. So.
I will add, I just want to add two things. The need for a pollution reduction plan was described in the last NPDS permit, but the projects we chose were chosen by the township. Not by this board, by a prior board, but the two projects were chosen by a prior board based on an analysis of potential projects. But the two projects were chosen by a prior board based on an analysis of potential projects and identifying those that would have the largest impact for the smallest investment. So. And then the second I will say, I say, I mean, we're all tasked with being good stewards of taxpayer money. But I will confess as a municipal manager, when I talk about a fiscal note of a particular action, I'm thinking about East Brandywine Township's funds, not necessarily the state or the federal government's funds. So like on our last agenda item, the fiscal note was zero. Obviously FEMA and PMA are paying money, but there was no East Brandywine Township money being spent. I would say using that standard, the fiscal note on this proposal is about $6,000. The difference between the $51,000 proposal and the 45,000 that we received in grant funding.
And this will help, this will help, help us in trying to obtain grants to fund whatever the new cost comes out to be. And shows that we are working towards complying with our MS four permit plan.
Exactly.
So we do get a couple of wins out of this without having to invest more than $6,000, $6,000, $6,000, $7,000. And then to be revisited in a couple of years again.
Staff can make the projects cheaper, but we can do our utmost to leverage them against other sources of funding. Which is what we, the bathroom was very expensive in the community park as well. But private fundraising and state funding are a huge portion of what that costs. There's nothing I can do about the sticker shock, but we can write grants.
It's not sticker shock, it's extortion. There's a difference.
I think, I think you're going to find a lot of small municipalities just saying, we're done, we're not doing this. And I know some, I know some that have already reached that point.
What is the penalty of just ignoring?
Compliance? If you ignore it, it could be very significant. And I'm actually giving the presentation on that soon at Peace Ads. DEP prefers voluntary compliance, which by you completing this grant, you're complying voluntarily in their mind. So again, it keeps you in compliance, even though you actually are not.
But suppose we don't comply?
You don't comply, they can have a penalty matrix where they are able to fine you either daily or up to every day of the year. So there is an example, pretty egregious one in West Virginia where a township just ignored it completely, didn't implement the program. They were fined well over a million dollars. They had to have to do it anyways. They had to hire a person, actually had to come in from the state and become a township staff person to implement the MS four program. So they basically got fined 1.5 million dollars, had to implement the program anyways, and actually had to implement it faster with even more restrictions. Now, they were one of the worst case scenarios because they really just told the government to, we won't talk to you. But there's multiple examples of that throughout the United States. Now, that's a very egregious one, but I have heard of other ones in the state of Pennsylvania. So they have a matrix which they use, so they're able to have some subjectivity in how they fine you. And one of the reasons or one of the biggest criteria in that subjectivity is, are you trying? And if you're really not, they do have the power to fine you daily, up to, I think even up to $35,000 a day. They usually just put an overall consent order and fine you a total number. However, they really do have a lot of power if they choose to use it.
Mr. Schlesser, can we find like a friendly judge that could?
No comment.
So what were the other grants for your customers? Were, we were 45,000. What were some of the other grants that were received, told? I mean, I'm assuming more of a.
From other clients, I guess is what it's at.
We're on the lower end for this one, but that's not atypical. With the Growing Greener grant program, they often, DEP will give you a smaller portion originally. And then as you're able to implement that smaller portion, get to that design that I was talking about earlier, then they give you more of the funding because they're concerned that they don't want to fund projects that don't get built. So that's sort of in the back of their mind. That's a big criteria on how they deliver.
We don't get any credit for all the work we've done through the open space committee to get easements along their open Growing Green corridor, along the Brandywine. And we have, we've made one acquisition at the gateway of.
You will get some credit.
You heard us talk about another one. We don't get any credit for that?
You'll get some credit for it, but it's actually not as high as you anticipate. Stream restoration, this project is the biggest bang for the buck. This is really where you get your credits from. Every other BMP.
We're doing, we're protecting the stream.
True, so there's two different concepts we're working on, and I know it can be challenging. So you have an MS four permit, and the reason why you have that is on your impervious area. And that's what drives your reduction. Not the overall water quality for the state or for where those streams are going. They're two different things, believe it or not. So the reason you have an MS four permit and the reason why you have a reduction is based on your impervious area, your houses, all that. That's how they come up with it, regardless of the streams. So there are, that's sort of how that, how it's factored. So it's pretty kind of complicated, but so the more houses you have, the more development you have, the more restrictions you have.
But we're limiting by acquiring this open space. You don't, I mean, that's what they, I mean, they came to us years ago. I was on the planning commission then with this Growing Green corridor. We're one of the few townships that has actually done something about it.
Great, it's great that you're doing that. I wish you would get more benefit and credit for it. However, the rules sort of are what they, you know, what they state they are.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a backdoor tax on every homeowner in the township. They're paying taxes and then they have to pay more, you know, to comply with these unfunded mandates that are coming down. And it's unfortunate. So it's where we're at, it's the world we live in now.
This would be the most cost effective, less risky.
I'm getting back to that, that what you're proposing here, as we state, sit here on April 3rd of 2025, is the, is the most cost efficient proposal to study the matter again and build a case to apply for additional grants. So unless there's any other discussion, I'm ready for a motion. I'll make a motion that we. That we accept the proposal from Cedarville Engineering. In the amount of $51,763.
Which amount will be offset by the 40-some thousand dollar grant, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Partially defrayed. Substantially, mostly defrayed, but not entirely.
Defrayed. How do you word that, Mr. Schlesser?
By a $45,000 Growing Greener grant. Try to say that quickly.
Growing Greener grant.
And it's for the Culverston Run Stream Restoration Survey, Design and Grant Management.
As stated from both outside. So we have a legitimate motion?
We do.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for explaining it. Thank you, Luke. Thank you, fellow supervisors. I think it's important we understand this because it is.
It's impacting the residents.
Yeah.
It absolutely impacts our residents.
It's like 8% of our budget, $450,000 for 450, 450 feet. They got all sorts of little pretty flowers you're going to plant along the edge. I mean, it's, it's.
Pretty expensive.
And that's the cheaper version.
For a stream that hasn't had a problem since they told us it was going to have a problem. And we've had three hurricanes come through since. I still like the backhoe idea. Thank you, thank you. Anything else from Cedarville?
Your agenda item 6B also deals with the popular subject of stormwater and coincidentally with our relationship with Cedarville Engineering.
Well, can we go to that right now and just keep it all?
That is next on the list.
Oh, it is? I thought it was a salt bar. Okay, 6B.
I'll do another just introduction to this concept. So unlike the other one-time projects we've been discussing, we have a annual relationship with Cedarville for their administrative support in keeping us compliant with the requirements of the MS four permit. For example, last year was a renewal year and we have the permit renewed. In your packet this morning is a proposal for MS four services in 2025. What is different about this proposal from previous years we do this is that there is actually three options included in there. Last year, for the first time, we made a change to how we do inspections of the small BMPs. So these would be the less than one acre stormwater BMPs. Instead of sending a single letter to homeowners describing a time when inspections could occur, we scheduled each inspection individually last year. This year, there is a thought that the township, which is planning to add new staff in the form of an assistant township manager, could be responsible for doing these less than one acre inspections. The difference between the three proposals before you this morning is, one, do we keep the status quo? Two, do we transfer the responsibility for inspections to the assistant township manager with support from Cedarville? Or do we transfer the responsibilities for small inspections to the assistant township without support? So those are the three proposals that are there before you. Almost everything else is just like every other year. The tasks that are necessary to keep compliant with our MS four permit. Introduction, aye?
Yes, no, that's good. The summary of the options and the pricing is on page nine of the proposal.
I guess one of the, one of the things that came up in the reorg was that we take a look at getting other bids for these services, which it doesn't appear to be done. But we have zeroed in on some options that will reduce the angst for some of our residents with regards to the inspection and the inspection fees. So we, we're looking at self-inspection for the most part in a letter that would go out to each resident that has to, you know, inspect and fill that out like they would for, you know, other amenities on their property. So I'll let Luke speak to that. So that's option two in this proposal, correct? Where we wouldn't make it in-house. So when we look at an assistant township manager, we want to look for someone that has a little bit of understanding.
The difference in the pricing is, 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 is under inspections three. It's, that's the savings between option two and option.
Right.
So it's my understanding, option three, they would do some assistance if needed to whoever in the township does the inspections, correct?
Correct.
And some training too, I think.
Yes, we provide the training and support. It is a challenging position to do. We try to outline in the proposal some of the actions that are required to do it so you can really kind of understand what needs to be done. It can kind of seem maybe easy from a distance, but there's actually a lot of steps that you have to do to accomplish this. My recommendation on, you know, on behalf of you, you know, working for you and me, is to go with the status quo. There's a lot of risk for little reward to go for the new program or to do it in-house. The new program is obviously costly to do your first year with hoping that you save over the five-year period. But there's a lot of unknowns because of this. And I'll give maybe one, for example, the township manager you have, the new one, the assistant manager, works and wants to leave after a year. Then you'd have to do the whole program over again. Or you'd have to retrain. Self-reporting too, like that sort of stuff. That's like, that could happen and that can affect your program. Another example for your consideration is if you have your talent, your residents self-report, they may not understand how to self-report, they may not self-report. I'm almost guaranteed you're going to have trouble with having some of them not self-report. So you're going to have to have somebody really managing that. And that could be a lot more challenging than you think. I mean, say if, you know, you're going to have to have to go out there, you're going to have to communicate with your residents. There's also more risk to the township. So another example would be if one resident is self-reporting and say a couple are not. And you have a bad storm and that BMP fails and that storm affects the next door neighbors. And the next door, that resident says, well, did they self-report? Did they check that BMP? So I could see the township getting some potential trouble, maybe liability, at least some residential concerns. So there's a real risk there to you. So to save $7,000, I think, I don't think you would actually ultimately save that. And it would be pretty risky for you to do. We did do some research across the state to try to find other municipalities that have done this. We did find one. They ended up trying it and it failed and they ended up having to hire the engineering firm back. And then they had to rush job it at the end and it ended up costing everybody more money and more headaches because they weren't able to finish it. And then you have to finish it in a certain timeframe. Furthermore, you have like 16 different BMP types. So it's not just very simple BMPs, you have quite a few different ones. So it's a little bit more challenging than it looks. And I really believe it is in your best interest to go with the status quo. I think it will ultimately save you money, save you potential concerns with your residents and just will be overall more effective for you. However, if you want to try to go for it on your own, we would be willing to, will always be available to help you. And, you know, obviously support any decision you want. We could have the training program. We could, you know, potentially hold that scope of item and see what person you're able to hire as assistant manager. But there's a lot, there's a lot of those moving pieces, a lot of uncertainty that you're just not going to be able to see right now. And anything could kind of happen. It just seems very risky to me.
So the cost of the consulting here and then the cost of an assistant manager were increasing, you know, what we, what we lay out. So why would we not want to have that assistant manager pay for himself? So we can reduce the amount that we pay consultants. That's, that's my, that's my.
I'm going to add, I manage a couple of commercial properties in a, in a well-known local township here. And they've gone to the, to the, doing it themselves, selves. I received the letter, I've received all of that. I was very impressed with how they're doing it. I see all the problems you've mentioned, but they also may not be problems, they're potential problems. So until we find that it's not efficient, I would lean towards option two, number two also.
The whole, the whole premise of bringing in an assistant manager is to have him pay for himself.
Right.
And if you're going to bring him in and you're going to continue to pay consultants, then what's the purpose here?
And we're a much smaller township than the other and they, they just, they're using their building department. They do their own inspections and all that.
If you look at it, it's kind of like Septics.
Yeah.
You know, there's companies that, all the companies can do the inspections. You know, there's companies that, all the companies can do the inspections on it, and it's self-regulated for the most part. We don't have government officials going to everybody's house and inspecting their septic tanks either. I do want to point out one thing with regards to you guys doing the inspections of the BMPs. I've stated this before. Two cases I can state with you guys doing it, you had, you know, what to me appeared to be an 18-year-old with a hood on walking around on people's properties and clearly uneducated on what he was doing first. But second of all, inspecting some BMPs that had their lids still on post-destruction. And the lids are still on to this day, and that was three years ago. So there's, I think there can be errors on everybody's side, whether it's professional or whether it's the township. But I think the township's best interest is the township, you know? And, and.
We're going to get sued one way or the other.
Correct, correct. So, you know, you tell me it was a 10-year, you know, degree to get to this point, I would say, okay, that's different. But I mean, you know, the people that you guys had, they were unmarked vehicles, you know, younger kid walking around on people's property. And we had a resident here that was upset about that too, because he didn't even know, so.
I mean, ideally, we'd bring in an assistant manager that has a background, and maybe he can manage our MS4 program. You never know.
And I'm not poking you, I understand.
We have to look at the efficiency of what we're doing.
There's, there's issues with doing it both ways.
I appreciate that feedback, and we'll, I'll make a note of it, do better.
All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the Cedarville proposal, option number two. Of course, stormwater management inspections, is that what it is? For the port services.
I'll second.
All right, so we're going to go with proposal option two.
Is that what you were leaning towards?
Yeah, yeah. We weren't going to get other bids from other engineering firms, then we'll do this for this year. All right.
And Matt, just out of curiosity, what is your stance on stormwater management? I mean, is it something that, you know, obviously you guys have seen going in and you think we're out of our wheelhouse here?
I don't believe so, as long as somebody has proper training, they know what to look for. I think with the assistants from Cedarville, I think somebody could, you know, be trained to know what to look for.
To be clear, we, option two is not the version that has the training.
Training.
And that, that training could be as needed.
Correct.
I would say let's just do option two, and if we find we need something, then we go in that direction.
Is there, like, time and material?
Absolutely.
And that's how you've been working with us in the past on a lot of the projects, is time and material.
Right, that'd be great. And yeah, perhaps you might be able to find an assistant manager that has a really good MS4 background or is pretty aware of it. They can, will need a lot of training.
That's what we would like to focus. At least I'd like to see us focus on something like that. I think it'd be very helpful for the township.
Right, I'd like to give it a try.
Yeah.
All right, we were, we have a motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the great discussion and helping us understand. All right, 6C, the condition of the salt shed.
Thank you. Due to the salt shortage this year, this year, our salt shed was nearly empty for the first time in a few years. Just gave us an opportunity to inspect the condition of the shed. What we found was the concrete walls are delaminating, causing rebar exposure and large cracks on the surface. I'd sent an email to the board with some photos that shows the condition of some of the concrete walls. Earlier this week, Foreman Kloss and I went to Keystone Concrete in New Holland. Keystone supplies concrete walls for salt sheds, also open silos for farming industry and other concrete structures such as boxcars. We asked Keystone if the existing walls could be replaced without removing the wood structure above it, which is the roof and the walls, and they pretty much told us that would be virtually impossible. And the reason is, the, the concrete walls need to be set with a crane and you can't have anything set above them. You know, the weight of most of the concrete walls were about eight tons. The existing concrete structure is eight feet high with an eight-foot frame structure above that. In order to gain capacity, we're recommending replacing the eight-foot walls with 12-foot and removing the existing center concrete wall. This should add an additional 100 to 150-ton capacity left and permit us to use the existing footings and the concrete board. So we'll be working on a budget item for 2026. This is just to let you know what the, the condition of the salt shed is.
How many of those, they're precast walls that are set and, and bolted together?
Correct.
So how many of those walls will need to replace? Have you identified, like, specific walls or is it the entire foundation?
The entire.
So you'd start all over again?
Right, right. We're just getting 12-foot instead of eight-foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
We're exploring the possibility of 12-foot. It's, we did obtain preliminary estimates, and for the eight-foot, it's about 30, and for the 12-foot, it's 30,000. And for the 12-foot, it's around 50,000. So it does add a substantial amount of cost to the project.
Yeah, but you're picking up, you said you're picking up 150 tons more storage capacity.
So you're.
And with the roads we've added in the last five years, I would think that's an important pickup.
Actually, 20 years, because it was sort of designed for when we built it 20 years ago.
The sequence of construction would be lifted, the roof comes off of it. Is that a solid structure that gets lifted with a crane? How does that, that come apart and then has to be rebuilt again?
We've looked into that, but in order to do that, you would have to relocate the roof, you know?
Build a structure to support it so it stays intact?
Right.
You're basically building it over again?
The other option is, yeah. Essentially, you start out with a new salt shed.
Got you.
Derek and I considered removing all the siding, removing the roof, but then as soon as one piece gets bent in half or whatever, then you're, you know, then you don't have what you had before. We, and very late, we're sensitive to it.
Yeah.
So I think we're leaning right now towards a new structure.
May I, in your memo, Matt, you'd indicated that you're doing this work in anticipation of this year? In your, is it this year's budget request, or you're doing this in anticipation of the budget process for next year?
Budget process.
Okay, thank you. Panicked.
Any other questions? All right, 6D, Stone, Stone Mill Village Financial Security Release, number two, always my favorite subjects.
All right.
Stone Mill Village, I believe it's called a plank, plank piece as we refer to it. Is that true?
That's true. Correct. Throughout the land development process, distracted land would be referred to as the Stone Mill Village. In your packet is a letter from Pinoni Township Engineer recommending the release of $797,435.5 from the original escrow of $2,951,830.47. The recommend, the, the improvements that have been constructed are listed in the pages after the cover letter. And Nate Klein, Township Engineer, notes that the, Pinoni has observed the construction of all the improvements and certify that they have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. And I will say, while that sounds like cash, that is not. This is, this is the financial security that a developer posts that represents all of the public improvements in the development. They, they meet this obligation through bond or through a line of credit. So the township does not write a check for those millions. We simply authorize the bank to reduce the, the financial security by that amount.
And there's still a contingency of 256,000.
Are we talking Stone Mill Village?
Nah, it's 1.68.
No, that's the amount yet to come out, right above that. Two numbers above it is the contingency.
You, you are correct.
Contingency is 256.
Right, that's, that's the thing.
That's a 10%.
Right. Well, we've had, we've had 3% and 4% contingencies. Or we've released contingencies too early. That's what I want.
I don't think we're releasing that until, that's the very end.
All right, any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I could make a motion to release Stone Mill Village Financial Security Release, number two.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next one, 6E, is Estates of Dallin Forge Financial Security Release, number five.
Yes, just like before.
Getting near the end here.
This development also has another name, is known as Hillendale throughout the land development process, but the community built there is Estates of Dallin Forge. In your packet is escrow release number five. The recommended release is 1.9 million, I'll round up. The remaining balance after the release would be $920,000. And as before, the engineer has noted that the improvements listed as, associated with the escrow relief have been constructed and completed in accordance with the approved plan.
There have been numerous questions, some even complaints about the stormwater management and excessive runoff and stuff. Just wondering if those have been cleared up. But have you noticed this has a construction contingency of 12%, so they're not always 10%.
I, I will, I'll just, I'll wave a little more detail on this.
I mean, you're the one that gets the complaints, so what's up?
Well, I, unlike the prior development, this one is now fully built out. There are no more housing starts. However, the work is not complete. Affecting the township and salt sheds and miles of road, the Center Spine Road has not yet been offered for dedication. That remains undeveloped. I can say, based on my recollection of correspondence, that the recommended escrow release is less than the developer sought. But, so, yeah, there's, there's still $920,000 worth of improvements to be made. I have no current anecdotes about erosion and sedimentation controls or stormwater management on the site. There have been such complaints historically.
So what's, what's left to be completed? I know there was an interior playground in the lower section. You know, off the top of your head, what's left there. And I know that the old Dallin Forge historical structure is to be completed and maintained by the HOA there.
Actually, everything in the letter to Pinoni, everything on the balance to finish, everything is zero.
Okay.
So until you get to the last page, so we're holding basically the two construction contingencies. The 720,101 and a $200,084 are the only things that are, that are completed. That aren't completed, so we're, we're holding those.
So everything else is.
So they're going to be asking for that shortly, I would imagine.
And where, I mean, do you know where things stand on the old Dallin House? Because it's on the agenda every month for the historical commission. Don't mean to catch your heart on that one, but might as well get it out there to the universe.
Well, I, I don't know that it was itemized on the escrow. There, there is a spreadsheet attached to the, to the cover letter here that has all of the improvements. So what, what's, you had earlier mentioned the tot lot.
Yes.
And a tot lot is itemized on there.
Okay.
I don't recall an itemized dollar amount associated with the.
Restoration of the Dallin House.
Correct. The, I, you are correct. The, the approved plan did state that the two historic resources on the site were to be preserved. The both have been preserved. One was later resold to a private party. The other will be transferred to the HOA.
Okay.
I, I won't say the matter is resolved, but I don't think that there is a nexus between this and the escrow release.
Okay. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just having a conversation.
I'm looking at the detail, nothing popping up for the.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think there's anything on there for that, as Luke stated.
Okay.
For the road department, I still have some concerns about the stormwater system, not the stormwater basins. Talking about the stormwater system, the roads proposed for dedication to the township.
Yeah, when does, have they, have that, has the 18 months started yet?
No, they haven't, the roads have not been dedicated yet.
They haven't put the top coat on yet?
Yes, that's complete. It's some of the stormwater issues. The developer has said that the stormwater was jetted and videoed, but Pinoni has not received that information.
Right, but I'm, for, for a change, I feel comfortable that we have 900,000.
And, and Pinoni has, yeah, Pinoni has assured me that, that, you know, this will cover whatever remaining issues the road department has.
And also, at the point that an offer of dedication is made, the township will have additional leverage to ensure that it's in proper condition before accepting dedication.
That's why we are for once holding the bag of cash. Any other questions on that? Then I'll make a motion that we release Financial Security Release, number five, of the Estates at Dallin Forge. I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, subdivision and zoning applications. I see none on the agenda. Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions for consideration. We have resolution nine of 2025 Municipal Records Disposition. Mr. Revan?
Yeah, we're at the conclusion of an all-hands-on-deck project. Multiple members of staff have been identifying records that are in our possession and have been in our possession beyond the prescribed destruction date for records of that type. I especially want to recognize Lisa and Emily's work in putting together the, the list of records to be destroyed that are attached to the resolution before you. If you've been in our conference room, you know it is stacked to the ceiling with, with mountains of paper to be shredded. The resolution would authorize staff to destroy the records consistent with the PHMC Records Retention Manual and describes the records to be destroyed so that posterity will note that such record is no longer in our possession.
You can't just burn them in the back.
No, we will, we will be shredding them. And I'll just, I'll just pick a random one here. I'm going to say. Let's say account statements. So these are bank statements. They're described as Financial Record Number Four in the PHMC, and the record retention schedule is seven years. Therefore, any bank statements in our possession that are older than seven years can be destroyed, although the law does require that the, that the governing body pass a resolution authorizing the destruction of those records. Tom, do you have anything to add on that?
I do not.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Nine of 2025, the Municipal Records Disposition, East Burnaway Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any? Notices, there will be a pension meeting following this session. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.